Okay, good morning, t- good afternoon. Today is Thursday, November first. Uh, this meeting is being broadcasted by local media. If you wish to have a copy of this, please reach out to the committee or superintendent. We'd be glad to give you a copy of this. Um, first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. I'm assuming everyone had the chance to read the minutes and go through them and everyone's. I get approval, motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Joe, seconded by Megan. All in favor? Next is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anybody like, anything they have anything to bring up? No? Joe? Chris?
I have one quickly. Um, we hosted, uh, this past Monday, um, story of a building, uh, Woodland Elementary School at the MSBA. And I just wanna thank, um, all the Woodland faculty, um, especially, especially Tim Kirin for helping to organize the event. We also had a number of our folks presenting, including, um, Assistant Superintendent's Kathy Perry and Craig Consiglio who served on a few of the panels. We also had our building committee, um, co-chairs Jonathan Bruce and Eldon Cheeky who also, um, presented during the day. But it was a great way, um, you know, for our folks to learn a little bit more about the MSBA building process, as well as share, um, our experiences with the, uh, Woodland project. So, great event overall. And thank you to Carla Tull for providing a fantastic lunch for our folks from across the state.
How was the turnout? Good turnout?
Yeah, we had probably somewhere between sixty-five and eighty, um, people.
Not bad, not bad.
It was a goo- it was a good. A lot of superintendents, a lot of, uh, school committee members from across the state.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, next item on the agenda is invitation to speak. Girls wanna come up, give an update?
Yep.
Yes.
Just introduce yourself so we can.
Okay.
Know who you are.
Um, I'm Maddie Rashard. I'm a senior at Milford High School and we're both part of the student leadership.
And I'm Eliza Valenti and I'm a representative of student leadership.
Good evening. What do you got for us?
So, last week was our, uh, spirit week and we had Monday pajama day, uh, Tuesday was neon day. When, uh, Wednesday was western day, Thursday was America day, and, uh, Friday was our class color day. And it was just great to see everyone participating during our week.
Um, last Friday was also our school's pep rally where, um, we all played volleyball against each other. Um, there's also a ceremony for the Special Olympics. Um, our school was one of the ten schools in the nation. That was, um, achieved this national standard of having a unified Special Olympics team. Um, so that was really cool. And we had a special appearance by one of the, um, New England Revolution, um, players, Andrew Farrell.
And also during our pep rally, we showcased the various activities and clubs that Milford High School had to offer.
Uh.
And we also went to Stacy Middle School, the marching band and cheerleaders performed for them.
Um, to showcase Milford High School and encourage everybody.
Let's go.
So, that's.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You get, anybody have any questions? Meg?
How do you choose what the spirit day theme will be each day?
Um, the student leadership votes on it. Um, it's the sophomores' jobs to come up with it and, um.
You put it to a vote at the end, yeah.
Yeah, and we all kinda have our thing. Um, the, uh, juniors also, um, organized, um, harvest dance, which occurred last Saturday as well, and seniors organized pep rally. Yeah, thank you.
That's. Alright, so thank you girls. Well, Joe?
It was a busy week.
Trying to get you out of here.
And it's great to see all the school spirit, um, yeah, every, on social media, seeing all the pictures, which is really great.
Yeah.
Hmm.
And i- is that the week, do you, do you do stuff for the lift dub that week as well, or is that a whole different?
That's a different, that's a different, that's more towards, uh, the springtime. I think they start that, they, I think they start the conceptually. Are you guys doing the lift dub this year?
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Normally.
Okay.
We, yeah, we're just starting.
Yeah, we're, we're starting to plan it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just starting.
Nice. Great.
Very exciting.
Yeah.
Alright, well, thank you guys, I appreciate it. Thank you Tom, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thanks.
Alright, next on the agenda, social emotional learning update. Good evening Lisa, how are you?
Good evening, thanks for having me.
Thanks for coming.
So, just to, um, to start off a little bit, we've been doing a lot of work. We're very lucky, um, this year that, um, as part of being the director, we also have a social worker working with us from K through, um, grade five, Anita Monti, and she's just been an invaluable resource. Um, so, um, really, she's like my right-hand person, so working together, we've been trying to do a lot here for our district. Um, some of the things that we've already done, some of, uh, my goals working with Kevin and Craig have really been to look at the consistency throughout our, um, school. So, we have two programs right now. We have our PBIS program that looks at behavior expectations, um, and sort of setting that up in each of the schools from pre-K through grade five, and also looking at our second step program, which is our skills-based program. So, um, one of, uh, the jobs that I'm really doing is working with principals, um, and we also have an SEL task force, which is comprised of one teacher from each of the buildings. And we've been going, um, working together with the Blackstone Valley schools, um, through training. So, each month we get together and really work on, you know, what it's, how do we bring SEL in our schools? What, looking at the programs that we currently have, like our PBIS and, and second step, how do we marry them together and look for consistency? So, I've been working with phenomenal teachers, um, along with the principals, and I just wanna, um, let you know who the teachers are. So, we have Nicole Leland from Shining Star, um, Christina Cote from Memorial School. We have, um, Dee Rizio from Brookside, Donna Williams from Woodland, Trish Rodolphy from Stacy Middle School, and we have Lydia Buckley from the high school. So, it's a great representation of the schools, but also from different disciplines. So, working together, we're looking at how can we build the consistency with our principals? And how can we really help the teachers understand that SEL is really woven into the classrooms, right? So, how, what are some teaching techniques that the teachers are already doing, not realizing, hey, wait a minute, I am teaching problem solving, or I am providing critical thinking skills and not knowing what I'm doing? Um, so, we'll, we'll be working on that throughout the year. One of our big pushes is to work with the faculty in February and just do a push out of, um, here's what SEL really is. I know you're hearing a lot about it, what really is it? And here's what you're doing in your classrooms and how, here's how you can enhance it. The other, um, things we've been doing, really, when you look at SEL, you look at staff, students, and families. So, um, with the staff, working with each of the principals, we've been trying to bring some programming in, and working with Josh this summer, we, um, were able to get the NAMM project in to speak to our faculty. And basically, the NAMM project consists of eighteen to twenty-two-year-olds who come in and share their mental health story with the faculty and how, um, what helped when they were going through it at a young age and what they wish the faculty had seen, and really teaching them about some tips and how to support students. So, as a follow-up, the NAMM project was invited to the health classes to speak to our ninth graders. Um, and they really did a nice, um, spin on how to really get the help, um, for, for yourself and how to help students, your friends, if they're going through, you know, anxiety, depression, and really had a really positive message for our kids and gave them an opportunity to ask them questions. Um, another, one of my goals is to make sure our, our entire district is trauma-trained by next year. So, our first step, my first step was to pull together our adjustment counselors, our school psychologists, social workers, nurses, and guidance counselors. And so, we're going through, um, some PD right now. So, the first step, um, we did attend the NAMM project together. We are having UMass Memorial come out to train us in December. So, it'll be, um, you know, step number one, so kind of like a train the trainer. And we've also invited Hope Dale and Blackstone Valley's, um, counseling centers to be a part of that with us as well. We're also, um, doing a book study, and from that, we're in the process of creating, uh, tips for teachers on how to respond to kids with trauma. Um, some phrases that they can say, some techniques to use in their classroom, and that should be done in the next couple of weeks. Um, so that's part one. Part two, what we'd like to do is this summer, really train administrators to be trauma-sensitive and then next year, really roll, roll it out for the entire staff with a vision of how can we, every few months, um, bring something new to the staff that they may, may need in their classrooms. Um, also, this is a great opportunity to bring our adjustment counselors together. So, really, um, a way to unite the district and bring the consistency is to have everyone, once a month, in the same room to talk about what's going on, what are the practices, and make sure everyone's kinda following the same thing and see what their needs are. Along with that, working with students, we, we kicked off, um, Start With Hello Week. So, one of the initiatives is really to try to have a program each month or every two months to, in each of the schools that kinda connects all of us. So, um, we got some really positive feedback on the week and we're hoping to continue that again next year. Um, for Bullying Awareness Month, October, each of the schools did a different program. So, and Memorial and PTO sponsored an event there. Um, and also Lisa Burns has done a great job in really pulling myself and other central office administrators in to do an SEL book read. So, this month was, um, focused on friendship and bullying. And each month, we'll be going out to the classrooms, we're assigned certain classrooms, and reading to the students on a certain topic, um, based on the categories, our SEL categories. Um, at Brookside, they also did the Unity Day, and we did some, um, presentations there on bullying, did some readings there. Same thing at Woodland Elementary School. And at Stacy, what we did was we kicked off our Seeds of Happiness program. So, last year at the high school, Craig and Lucy, uh, kicked off the Seeds of Happiness program here. So, it's basically a little clay, um, ball and it has a happy face on it. And the idea is you give it to someone who really makes an impact in your life and makes you happy. So, um, this year, we kicked it off at Stacy. Each student received a seed of happiness and, um, the message that was delivered was to give it to someone who really has made an impact in their life. So, it could be someone, you know, now, they could wait until, you know, they're a senior and look back and give it to a teacher or someone who, um, made an impression on them. And with that, we did the second step program. So, our, um, first second step program was in October and I'll be working, um, throughout the months with the adjustment counselors and getting that, so we'll have our big assemblies. But also, um, I've been invited into some of the classrooms to do some of the work during their social emotional period at Stacy. Um, I know I have a lot to say, so. Some of the other things that we've done, Anita and I working together, um, we've created some partnerships. So, we had a partnership with Community Impact for a long time. So, basically, what we were finding is that our students who are needing more support than just their adjustment counselors are waiting four to six months on a waiting list to get into counseling services. So, working with Amy Leoni, um, last year, Community Impact came in and are offering services to the students who would normally be waiting on a waiting list. And so, that's working with the families to get their students, um, seen here. But we also started a partnership with Wayside Trauma Intervention and also their outpatients. So, they're also coming into our schools to see students who need the additional support. And along with that, we were finding, working with Josh this summer, um, really, our bilingual students were suffering 'cause we need more English, um, people who can speak Spanish and Portuguese to service our students who are coming up with needs. So, we were able to do that with Wayside. So, now we have a, um, a Spanish-speaking and Portuguese-speaking counselor who are here to see the students who need that, and we're looking to kind of increase that as well. We, uh, also a nice partnership with the Edward Kennedy Center. So, students who are needing resources, we're able to, we have those, you know, phone numbers, we can make a quick phone call to and get students in and their families as, as quick as they can. Um, Anita's working with the, um, elementary school. So, she really is a great resource. Since the beginning of the start of the year, she's already worked with thirty families in getting them services, either home-based services, um, services with DMH, DDS, anything from, I need, you know, childcare after school, can you recommend anyone? So, we're really doing a lot of outreach for our families when they need support. Um, up here at the high school, I've been working with our adjustment counselors and guidance counselors, as well as Stacy Middle School too, to get those families those services. Um, we have created an SEO website, so it definitely is under construction. Um, but feel free, anyone out there watching, um, to get on. We have some resources out there. We're trying to put, um, some monthly information for parents who are looking for that. And we've also created, um, a trifold that we'll be sending out to the schools with some information, um, just where if parents need to know some other resources out there. So, we've been trying to make some great connections in the community. We're also looking to, um, partner with, like I said, Hope Dale, with some of their programs and look at what they're doing and have them come here and look at what we're doing as well. Um, and I think, um, just some of the things moving forward, um, which the principals will be getting tonight. Um, two of the things, we're looking to provide some support for our staff. So, not only when Anita and I have been getting calls from staff to come in to share some resources with them, but, um, what we're looking to do is have, once a month, a, um, sort of like a take care of you for staff between three and three-thirty. And I'm working collaboratively right now with Judy Dagnes, Lisa Caruso, who's a nurse here at the high school, and Lisa White. So, we'll be doing some self-care stuff for staff in each of the buildings, starting, um, November nineteenth. So, that'll be, um, the principals will be receiving that tonight to roll out to their staffs. And, um, another project that I'm gonna be, um, rolling out to see if principals are interested doing in the buildings, one of our high school guidance counselors, Kate Molinari, will be running the Boston Marathon. And she's running, um, and her buddy is a two-year-old boy who has a brain, who has brain cancer and, um, is undergoing treatment at Children's Hospital. So, she's, um, looking to do an activity where she's collecting, um, slightly-used shoes and all the proceeds go to Children's Hospital. And she's also looking to see if, um, students would wanna make cards for the little boys. So, that'll be rolling out as well. I don't know if you have any questions, anything you'd like me to look into?
Anybody, any questions? Joe?
Yeah, a- a- what you're doing is fantastic, Lisa. Bringing the consistency that you talked about and, and the structure to the initiative is, is so critical.
Thank you.
So, really appreciate everything you're doing. Um, now that you're in the role, I, I, I would envision that you're starting to put together sort of a, a budget for.
Mm-hmm.
The SEL initiative and, um, I know you mentioned the social worker, that's K through five.
Mm-hmm.
I know that's something we talked about during the last budget season, perhaps growing that, um, group and bringing in some additional social workers. So, as we go into the budgeting process, which we're essentially in, in right now, I assume that we'll start to hear about some of these initiatives that you feel are important, right?
Yes, absolutely. And we would love, and definitely love another social worker, um, bilingual counselors, if we could get them.
And the partnerships that you talked about, uh, so Community Impact, Wayside, the Kennedy Center, are, are there fees associated with that?
So, the nice thing, so our trauma intervention services, there isn't a fee, um, so that's because they're all grant-funded. Um, with the other counseling agencies, it works through a parent's, um, their insurance. So, um, it's basically, instead of seeing them at the center, they'll see them here.
Okay.
Anybody else, Meg?
I just wanna commend you, Lisa, when you describe what you've done. I feel like clearly you've been on the job for two years as opposed to a few months.
Oh, thank you.
I think taking the ball and running with it is really impressive. Also, in connecting with various staff members, all of the feedback is positive. So, I commend not only your effort, but your energy.
Thank you.
'Cause I think having the right person in this role just makes it, the program, um, incredibly strong. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Has anything surprised you that you've learned as you've kind of been throughout the district? I know you were focused at Woodland for a few years. Now, you've had an opportunity to see different schools. I'd just be curious if the ne- the nature of the need or, I don't know.
No, I think it really, it didn't surprise me. I know, um, there is an increase in the need and just for some consistency, I think that has always been, you know, just how can we get everything in place? How can we work jointly together? And I think it's nice that, you know, in one day, I can be at Shining Star Preschool working with, you know, a three or four-year-old, and then I jump up to the high school today. I was talking about, you know, my experience going to college and being Portuguese with some of our students here and, you know. So, it's, it's kinda neat to jump from one building to the next and also to work with teachers. And I think that's what I love the most. And I, sometimes I feel guilty, like I walk down, I'll pass Kevin in the hallway and I'm just having conversations with people. And I feel like that's what I do all day long, is just talk to people. But I think it's so important, and that's where, like, I'm sharing information, getting information, um, just being able to be a resource. So, it has been phenomenal. And I have to say, the staff is unbelievable. Um, so I'd worked with some of the high school staff, so like, being back up here has been really nice to see people I haven't worked with in a while, and they've been so welcoming, and teachers will invite me in their classroom. And same thing at Stacy and Woodland. And I hadn't worked at Brookside and Memorial, but everyone has been so welcoming, on board. I think they have an idea. And then, you know, I'm getting an email, hey, can you come down here? I'd like to bring this program in, or what do you think about this? So, it's been really exciting.
I'm certain you've earned it, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, so Lisa, congratulations and, and to echo everyone else, you're doing a fabulous job. You, you had mentioned about other schools like Mil-, uh, Hope Dale too. Do they have a program similar to this that they're working on? Or is it something you're gonna be working collaboratively with to have them start their own program or something?
So, so each of this, we're working with the Blackstone Valley. So, Hope Dale doesn't have a director of SEL, but they have, um, a group of teachers working on SELs. And same thing with, um, we're working with Millville and, um, my goodness. Oh, I'm trying to think of the other schools that are there.
That's fine.
But, so, they basically, some people have SEL coaches, some just have a group of teachers working together. So, we, um, come once a month. We have a, a teacher through our RIBS, um, who talks about SEL with us and how can we incorporate it. So, we're really, like, making a partnership like that. But from that, we started inviting them. So, I've been invited to attend some of their trainings. They, and I invited them to come to ours. So, just really kinda collaborating with them.
Good. Chris?
Thank you, Lisa. You know, thank you for hitting the ground running with this program.
Thank you.
Certainly has been great to hear this, you know, so many, the list of things that you're, you're going through and the programs are astounding. And I think one of the most important things is the, the outreach support, you know, and it just proves that, or shows that, you know, the schools, it's, it's beyond just, you know, um, learning of, of writing and math and sciences. But, you know, truly the social aspects of learning, um, has, is a, an important part of the everyday activities of our, of every student. And we just certainly appreciate you, uh, taking the lead, um, and making sure that's happening every from, from pre- preschooler right up to, uh, twelfth grader. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Will?
Can I just, um, I wanna just, uh, kinda echo what the committee has said, you know, Lisa's done a phenomenal job. She always, uh, probably once or twice a day, will pop into my office with like a sheepish grin on her face with, with some idea. And we kinda bounce it, bounce it around. But I, you know, I love, like, you know, you have the right person when, like, it's constant enthusiasm from the start of the day to the end of the day. And she's really, like, been able to get, you know, folks from, across the district to kinda buy in and, and really rally. Because it's, it's more than a one-person job. It's really, it's, it's every, every educator's job in the Milford Public Schools. And I think, I think Lisa does a great job of kind of making that burden a little more diffuse 'cause it is, i- i- it's, it's a large, it, you know, there's a large responsibility, you know, with this position. So, congratulations, keep up the great work, and I look forward to seeing you at the more morning.
Thank you. Thank you for your support, everyone.
Thank you, Lisa. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Milford School Policies. Um, first reading of concussion policy and procedures. Policy, Megan, do you want?
Sure, absolutely, Joe. So, this is one we had provided to the committee last week. Um, it's just pretty much some minor updates, really, to incorporate the middle school sports program, which wasn't in existence at the time that the policy rules all, rose, ruled out. Um, as well as to highlight kinda some of the, um, processes that we put in place to really assess concussions and make sure that we have students, um, coming back in the manner that is, you know, approved by a doctor, et cetera. So, those highlights are, um, in red in the policy that's in front of everyone.
And that's just the first reading, so we're not gonna do a vote tonight. Um, next on the file is, um, school committee operational goals.
So, I just, you know, as joining the policy committee, one of the things I've tried to do is read through all of our policies. And obviously, there's a number, so it's a work in process. But one of the ones I stumbled on was the school committee operational goals policy. And I just wanted to bring it up to the committee. Um, it looks like it was implemented back in twenty fifteen. And just talking about us as a group having a set of goals, which I'm strongly in favor of, so I just wanted to have the committee look at it. Um, I also had sent around some examples of other, um, sort of communities, um, school committees rather, what their goals were, just to kinda give you a sense of, I know, how broad or succinct they could be, um, how they could be aligned with the superintendent's goals, certainly our strategic plan, and really just open it up for discussion. If this is something we'd be interested in, which I really would encourage, I'd be happy to, you know, work with each of you to draft something that we can look at together and put in some goals for this current year.
Yeah, absolutely. I'll open it up to discussion if anybody wants any questions or anything.
Yeah, I, I think it's a fantastic idea. I know, um, historically, this committee's talked about this, but we've had a number of starts and stops, but, but we, we haven't followed through on it. So, it'd be great if we can finally, you know, push this forward and, and follow through on it. The MASC does provide some training if we wanna moderator, moderator to help us determine what our goals are, something we could look into. Or we could just do it on, on our own and, you know, s- schedule a, a separate meeting. We can just sit down and brainstorm goals for the groups.
Okay.
Whatever you guys think.
Would this be something that we'd wanna throw on the agenda every other meeting or something? Is that kinda your idea, like, we'll, we'll tackle this goal on this agenda for this meeting or the next one?
Yeah, what I'd, absolutely, Joe. What I'd love to see us do is set up, establish the goals, and then really identify timelines. So, as we're approaching the timeline, assess where we are to completion. So, if we have one goal that's gonna be done in December versus June, then we could add them to the schedule kind of in accordance with when we'd expect them to be complete.
I'm all for it, absolutely.
Certainly, yeah. I mean, certainly, yeah, what you came across with other, other towns and the framework for their, for their goals is certainly something that we can utilize for, you know, to start our own framework, you know, and, uh, continue it as a working document as we, you know, um, establish our goals as a committee. You know, certainly, I think it's gonna be important. I think it's, it'll be healthy for all of us to talk through, kind of, you know, and give us that, that form. You know, I think a lot of times we get, we're on our, our, our agendas and we try to work through it. So, certainly to, to allocate some time to certainly, uh, just have a, you know, a very open discussion will be very beneficial overall.
Great.
What?
I looked over, um, some of the example ones that Megan has sent around. I liked, in particular, I liked the one that aligned with the superintendent's goals. And since we're talking about that today, I think that kinda, you know, would be a good place to start. Um, I don't know when we're gonna actually discuss them, but I thought that might be a good place to start.
Yeah, we could set something up. I don't know if we wanna have like a subcommittee. Well, no, you're doing the policy, so we won't wanna do that. Maybe we'll just have a meeting before we have an actual school committee meeting or something. We'll talk about what we wanna do. Or, or is it something you just wanna shoot emails and ideas on, um, for policies regarding this? I don't, I don't know what the committee wanted to do on stuff.
If people had s- certain things they were very keen on to, if you'd be, if you'd like to send them over, maybe we could work it through the policy subcommittee, or I could create a draft for that group to review, and then we could bring it for the full group to approve.
That's okay.
To weigh in on and approve, I should say.
Right.
When you think about the different subcommittees, would it be beneficial for some of the subcommittees to come up with maybe a goal that can tie in? So, I mean, obviously budget's budget, but the long-term education plan, um, you know, there's still the marketing side of things, you know. You know, each one can, can kinda maybe present a goal and then maybe elaborate and work with the, the full committee on that goal and what the, you know, the expectation levels would be overall.
Great.
Absolutely. Yeah, well, um, I don't, I don't wanna say we'll leave it up to you guys, but, um, well, everyone, you get some ideas or something like that, shoot them over. We'll go through them in emails and everything. And you guys, next time you have a policy and you need to figure something.
Okay.
What do you think, sorry, do you think, wouldn't it be beneficial to maybe have Melissa look at calendars and just pick a day for the entire group to get together and, and brainstorm that, maybe some time and?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. If we wanna, you know, just pick a night and do like, uh, like a working, working meeting.
Yeah.
Like we do with budget and.
Right.
Yeah, so that's the first reading. There's no vote due on that tonight. Um, next on the agenda is superintendent's goal. You're up, Kevin?
Yeah, so, um, this is kind of a reformatting of the goals I presented previously. And I, I don't know if it makes sense to go through them all, but basically, let me talk about the formatting and then I guess if, if folks have questions, um, I'm more than happy to answer. Basically, what I, how I broke it down was in a, in a four categories. Is, um, you know, the goal itself, we're, how it ties into one of the four strategic focus areas or multiple strategic focus areas. Some, some measures of effectiveness, and then some of the evidence we've used to kind of, to kind of address that. Um, so, uh, maybe I'll read the six goals and then if people have feedback or questions, um, we can kinda go from there. So, the first one is foster culture of continuous learning and growth for all students. The second goal is lead the completion of the Long Range Education Facilities Plan. Three is ensure the, ensure the technology implementation and digital tools support the learning of all students. Uh, four is foster high expectations for instruction and learning through administrative or professional development that focuses on high-impact strategies for student learning and growth. Five is provide leadership for the implementation and expansion of social emotional, of the social emotional learning program. And six is promote the success of all students by collaborating with families, community members, and higher education and business partners. And I'd also like to, uh, thank the committee for kinda feedback on, on the development, it, just to, it was very helpful. Anybody have any questions?
You just wanna, you wanna rifle through each one of them or?
Well, I, I think I've already kinda go- gone through them before. These are kind of, this is a reiteration of them, um.
Go ahead, Chris.
But, you know, as you, we go through the year, um, obviously, there's different measures of eff- of effectiveness. Um, do you anticipate, yeah, just, I guess, periodic presentations to the committee, you know, here we are? You know, doesn't, certainly doesn't have to be that we've completed these goals, um, but where are we, how are things developing?
Yeah, so I think you've lived through a few of them recently, 'cause Craig kinda just presented like the MCAS kind of data.
Right.
Which, which kinda puts it off-cycle. This is one of our issues in education. We have kind of an evaluation cycle that isn't in line with like, you know, some of the data that we were doing.
Right.
But I think, you know, Craig presenting, I think Lisa presenting tonight about SEL and what's happening there are kinda two examples of that.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
I think sometimes I'll give you updates. Um, you know, Jen or Janine, I think, is coming at the next meeting to talk about some of the things that tie into a few of these areas.
Okay.
So, um, I think we can do maybe a couple of kind of more broad overviews that I would present. But I think a lot of the presentations are kinda geared around a lot of these goals.
Okay.
I think, kinda, w- it, it kinda natural.
Sure.
If that makes, I don't know if that makes sense, I think.
No, it does, yeah. Like you said, I think it's im- just important to, you know, kinda continually review what the goals are and, you know, are all the supports in place to be able to obtain these goals by the end of the school year?
Yeah. Yeah, that's good.
Kevin, the first goal, the evidence, that's specific to math achievement, 'cause that's really what the goal's focused on, the first part of it, is that right?
Well, it's, it's, it's beyond, I think one of our focus is within, um, the academic piece is mathematics.
So, it's, okay.
But we're also looking at, like, I mean, obviously, other areas as well. So, I think MCAS overall, we're looking at, like, when I say MCAS measurement, uh, we're not just looking at mathematics, we're looking at.
So, when we're assessing this, will we be comparing fall versus spring scores on MCAS?
There's, there's no fall ver- this is the way to just, there's no fall versus spring scores. There's really, we won't have the scores until next fall.
So, it's evidence.
So, it's, it's year, it's year, it's year-over-year. So, that's the tricky part of it.
Okay.
So, you're really not gonna have, you're really not gonna have a sense to say, wow, and the, you know, 'cause we just don't have fall and spring scores. They just, you get, we do spring testing and then we get the results in like the late summer, early fall, and we share them out with the community. So, we really don't have an assess, it's like a, it's like a year-over-year summary of assessment.
Okay, are there other metrics that we could use this year to assess this?
It's, it's tr- it's tricky. I, I think there's a lot of measures we could use, but to kind of say that it's leading to improved MCAS scores, I don't think so. I think one of the things that Tim is gonna present on, and Tim Kirin, the Woodland principal, is gonna talk about some of the interim assessments we're, um, implementing. It's it's tr- it's tricky, I I think there's a lot of measures we could use, but to kind of say that it's leading to improved MCAS scores, I don't think so. I think one of the things that Tim is gonna present on, and Tim Kieran of the Woodland Principal is gonna talk about some of the interim assessments we're um implementing. But again, that's more of an action, and I don't know if we're gonna see like the connection to either MCAS score, student growth, student learning, probably for a couple of years of actually looking at that data.
Okay. I love this as evidence, I'm just struggling when it comes time to do the review, I'm not actually gonna be able to easily.
It's it's gonna, it's gonna be, it's gonna be tricky, I think, you know, some of it's gonna be based on some of the other evidence, and I think we're gonna, it's the same issue we have when we're looking at principals and teachers. You know, it's just, it's just endemic to education, like we look at like, you know, the, you know, some of the big measures, like AP scores, SAT scores, and a lot of those come like theoretically after the evaluation cycle. Ends in terms of summative assessments. You really don't wanna use formatives for like a measurement, because we're using that to inform our instruction.
Okay.
And I think looking at like final exams, I don't know, we have so many different, and we have a.
Right.
Like, over like two or three hundred unique courses of high school alone, so it'd really be tough to kind of say, like, we wanna look at these scores versus, you know, you know what I mean?
Right. I do, I think I'm just struggling. I know these, this is consistent, I think, with what's in the strategic plan, which I think makes sense, it just maybe would push back, if we can't use this to measure, it doesn't make sense, I don't think they have it as evidence.
Yeah, yeah. The the. Yeah, but I think it's something we we have to look at, so that's why I put it on there.
Okay, I I agree with it, it's important.
You know, I don't think, I don't think it follows the evalu- and I agree with you, I don't think it evaluates.
Okay. Okay.
I don't think it follows the evaluation cycle, but I think it's something that is important for folks to know that this is what we're focusing on.
Okay. Agreed. I definitely agree with that.
So I think less so, I probably for my evaluation in terms of goals, but more so about what we're looking at more broadly as a district.
Okay. And I definitely agree with that.
If that makes sense. I think there's enough other things where you can kind of get a sense of of what we're doing, and I think, and I think you'll see like year over year, you know, some pieces with MCAS and some of the other things we're working on.
Absolutely. Okay. Yep.
But I didn't wanna put some of those other things in because they're in development and I can't guarantee how it's gonna turn out.
Okay, so that actually leads to my next question. So I was surprised not to see um sort of an update of the strategic plan on here, is that just happening anyway?
Yeah, we're gonna do that. I I try to do that like two times at least during the year, and if there's specific questions, we can redo it more often.
Okay. Okay, great. Um and then is each school coming up with a distinct plan for, sort of to target absenteeism? I know you had developed a plan to reduce the number on who that school's specific.
Yeah, so we're, and we'll be talking about that, and I'm sure people will be presenting, you know, different principals will be presenting kind of some of the things that they're doing, because we, you know, we did see great success with working on this here, and all the principals are looking at some, and and the challenges are different at different levels, obviously.
Okay. Great. Yeah, excellent. Absolutely, okay, thanks.
Chris. Pardon me, Lou. So there's a variation, I guess, between our strategic plan and and what your superintendent goals are, I guess, I wasn't.
Yes. Yeah, I've I've tried, yeah, so.
Can you speak to that a little bit, I'll make my own benefit of it, so.
Yeah, sure. So our district strategic plan is the the things that are happening across the district.
Yeah.
In the four big areas, which are um social emotional learning, equity and access, growth-focused instruction, and continuous learning.
Right.
And so those are things that are happening across the district.
Correct.
All of our school improvement plans are aligned to that strategic plan and those four strategic focus areas. My goals are kind of aligned to the big-ticket items within the strategic plan and are aligned to the four strategic focus areas.
Okay. There it is.
So I'm kind of, a lot of the things I'm putting on here are things that are, we're pushing in the schools that I'd like to see happen over the course of the year.
Okay. Alright.
Does that kind of, yeah?
It does, no, that makes, I just, I. I need to fully understa- I w- I I had a a sort of an understanding, but it it's more, I can understand it now.
It's a lot of different, yeah. Yeah. Okay, good, good.
Another question, when we look at, you know, we wanna improve the MCAS scores for math, you know, when we want, we're looking now, I guess. As, uh, is, if we drill down to the class level, are we truly, have we ch- have we modified our curriculum this year in anticipation of of trying to improve our MCAS scores and is that?
So, yeah. So, we we modify the curriculum every year, but what we try not to do is make wild adjustments one way or another, based on one year's worth of data.
Right. Right.
I think some of the things that we've done in the last couple of years that I think have been, that I think will show some some improvements, we've seen some evidence in smaller sets, is I think SD math will um yield some kind of improvement and growth. I don't know if that's, you know, in terms of like, I can't say, like, this much time on SD math is gonna equate to this many points of improvement in, you know, math MCAS.
Right. Right.
But like, we've added the um intervention course, that every student that's at risk of potentially failing the MCAS in tenth grade will have access to that course, and that's gonna have a positive impact.
Right. 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 So something like that can be, can that be utilized as evidence that, or you have so many kids that are in this course and by the end of, or along a certain duration, either these kids have have made sustainable uh gains, they're.
Yeah, yeah.
They're no longer required to take it, or are they, and they continue on, or you know?
Yeah, so basically the course is um, i- i- again, it it's one of those things where it's not gonna line up to the evaluation cycle, because the kids will think, the kids will take the course, they take the MCAS in May, we don't get the results until until later.
Yeah, right. Yeah. But that's truly the only way to be able to tell, or do they, they test within that course?
But. So, we're always gonna be one year. They test within that course, but I don't know if that's going to, I don't know if you're gonna get like. I I I I'm hesitant to take like single-course measures to kind of say, this is evidence, because I, and I want my goals to be broader than like a, like a single course or a single group of courses.
Right.
And I don't have a good answer for you, because like, again, I don't love like other fo- like the complete focus on MCAS either, because that's really not the end game. The end game is really what's happening when the students graduate.
Right, that's what I was wondering, is there some other.
But. Yeah, it's.
Measure within this group or within math itself that we can look at to to say, all right, these these students are making gains and hypothetically will do better on the MCAS without having to wait for the MCAS, like, you know, this. If there was a modification in in the actual teaching.
Pa- i- i- po- possibly, I just, cause I think we're talking about like very different things, like the way elementary, like elementary assesses very differently than middle school than, you know, than high school.
Right.
So I think it's tricky to say like, like, we're gonna look at like mid mid-year like assessments and end-of-year assessments. I think there's some promise with the interim assessments, and we might be able to come up with something there when we get those implemented, but I don't know.
Okay.
Like if I can say, like, I expect like X number of kids to increase X percentage from, because the concepts change too, you know, the kids are focused on.
Right. Yep.
Any thoughts on that, Craig?
The only thing I can think of is it's like a three-year goal and you're looking at it every year.
Exactly.
Right.
Yeah, that that that's a positive, that might be a good way to frame it. And I think it's it's been on there, it was on there last year, I mean, that might be the way to look at it. And I think we could tie in, you know, some other, some other o- other of our big-ticket assessments into it, um. Yeah, I I think we could definitely do that. My only worry is we're in November now, and, you know, I'd rather get the goals approved and kind of move forward than. Cause I, cause I think we're on the same page, it's just how how do we measure it, and I think we can kind of look at it, and I think we're looking at it critically anyways.
Right. Yeah.
I don't know.
It it it's it's definitely a challenge, cause we're not, you know, we're not working on a manufacturing line, right, where you you make one change and you can immediately see that the results from making that change, yeah, with with education, you you don't realize the impact until three, five years down the road.
Hmm, hmm. Right.
So it's hard to measure anything from one year to another, um and I think a lot of what we're talking about is gonna sort of tie into that scorecard that I know Craig's intimately involved in developing, so.
Yeah.
Um, you know, I think that will drive a lot of the measures that we utilize within the within the district.
Mm-hmm.
But it's so, just to kind of piggyback on Chris's initial question, cause I I know sometimes we use the the wrong terminology on on our side as well in terms of the the planning, so you have the, you have your goals, which are really one-year goals, right?
Correct.
Then you have the strategic plan, which is sort of the overarching three-year plan, um and then we have the long-range plan, which is really more of a facilities plan, not necessarily an educational plan, right?
Correct. Correct.
So the educational plan is that strategic plan, that three-year plan, and then the school improvement plans are tied into that, your plans tied into that, our goals are gonna tie into that, and that's really how.
Correct. Right. Correct, and so you're gonna see a lot of overlap, like, and what, well, this is why it's confusing, cause you're gonna see a lot of overlap between the three, because what I'm trying to do is really, through my goals, is to highlight some of the big-ticket things that we're trying to do across the district.
Right.
And a lot of these things are things that um. That I may not be like, like, I'm not in there teaching the math classes, but I'm supporting like the like the implementation of interim assessments that in with an elementary school, or, you know, the expansion, and I think the whole committee is too. The expansion of uh intervention classes at the high school, the um implementation of project lead-the-way courses that are, you know, more like hands-on, engaging, high-end science activities. So it's it's kind of, cause like even even this process, like just if you wanna get really technical, it's very different than like a traditional evaluation process where you'd have two goals, which one would be professional practice and one would be student learning. What I try to do is expand it so it's more like comprehensive, so really, it's just another opportunity to kind of promote some of the things that we're doing across the district.
Right, and then our our goals will be more around, cause there's a fine line uh between what we're responsible for and what the administration is responsible for, right? So our goals are gonna be more around, how can we support them from a budget perspective, from a policy perspective, um from building community support, and that that type of thing.
Right. Yeah, cause I certainly wanna look at it, that if we're we're throwing additional resources at math to be able to improve the scores, you know, that. That our money's being spent in the right ways, right, so that leads back to us in 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 what we're in charge of, right, which is the budget, and with your budget, we want you to be able to spend that money.
Yeah. Yeah.
In the way to to increase our MCAS score, so that's why, uh you just. Waiting till next year at this time just seems a, seems a long ways away, um with trying to establish, already starting to establish a budget for for next year too, so. Just trying to, I guess, wrap my hands around how. You know, if if you needed an additional math intervention teacher now, you know, we're starting for next year, how do we assess that now to be able to to.
Mm-hmm.
Have evidence that we do need it and to show that by adding one intervention teacher, we've made these many gains, by adding a second, we could in- increase it that much more.
Hmm. Yeah, so one of the things like, like the intervention course at the high school's a great example, cause we had um, it was either two or three sections that were, that was taught um last year. And we collected data and kind of, you know, how the students did in eighth grade, how they did in tenth grade, their growth scores, and we really saw like promise with this practice, so that's why we expanded it. So like principals are collecting data as they go, and I think when you go through the budget process, you'll see how, you know, they'll they'll make justifications, you know, sometimes using data, sometimes looking at like, hey, we're seeing an increase in, you know, the number of EL students, or the number of.
Okay, okay. Right.
Um, you know, students with disabilities, with a particular disability, and we need to look at, you know, a particular type of program because of that. So there's a variety of things that we're collecting underground.
Mm-hmm.
That um, you know, drives the budget process as well as the improvement process.
Right, yeah, okay.
But it's all layered together, so it's.
Right, exactly, yeah, there's so much depth to it, you know, that just trying to, yeah, and fully understands it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So so one one goal that we've sort of, we we we've touched on in in the past, and I'm trying to figure out where would fit into this plan, I don't know if it's.
Which part do you refer to, Joe?
Continuous learning, professional development of community engagement, but I I think there's gotta be. So one of the things that I I've struggled with, um and that I've got a lot of feedback with families over the years, is in regards to communication um with teachers and administrators about their individual student, their their children.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
So is there a way that we could create some sort of goal to i- improve the communication between the district and and families about the performance of their individual students? And whether that's done through the use of technology to be able to give quick updates through the family portal, or um if it's a way to improve the the report card process or the progress reports, so that you can give a little bit more color behind how you your student did during the the semester. So the parents aren't as surprised, or um so the parents have an opportunity to really work with their their child throughout the term, as opposed to, you know, getting a report, a grade at the end of the semester.
Mm-hmm. Right, 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 right. Um I think what what we'd have to do there is probably like push that down, like I know a lot of principals, a lot of our principals will use like some sample goals or recommended goals for teachers. And maybe we could draft something that across the district, we could have teachers maybe incorporate into the into their goals, and I could push that with the principals.
Yeah. Yeah, one of the things I heard at the open house earlier this year, which was really refreshing, one of the ELA teachers said, one of his personal goals was to have two conversations with each student's parents throughout the semester, and I thought that was really powerful, you know, cause I think that goes a long way, yeah.
Right. Yeah. 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 Mm-hmm.
And so if that, if we can create that type of culture where that level of communication's happening, I think it would benefit, you know.
No, I, and I don't disagree with you, but I think that would be where we would drive that, because it would be like at the individual teacher level, at the school level, where like a principal would say, hey, one of our goals this year is really, you know, communication around X, Y, or Z. You know, whatever that is, if it's, you know, it could be as 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 simple, and I wish I think some of the simplest goals are best goals, you know, that the two conversations per semester is kind of a nice, you know, measurable, manageable goal.
Yeah. If if we could help them at a a broader level through technology, whether it's the the Google platform or the fam- the family portal, cause I I I feel like the family portal today, the product that we utilize is is that we have is underutilized. I don't think people are using it as effectively as they probably could, um and I don't know if it's because it's just a difficult product to use, or if it's time-consuming for the for the teachers, or in the Google plat- platform to get better.
I I think it's, I think it's, I think it's all that on both sides, depending on the tool you're you're talking about, cause like even like Naviance for high school college planning is a phenomenal tool. That gives you like great information and great data, but you really have to kind of like almost sit through, you either have to be kind of tech-savvy or sit through like a kind of a training, and, you know, gives you a ton of great information and it's and it's being underutilized. And, you know, and I think some of it is we have so much kind of coming out of people, not just from the school side, but from like just life, that I think we have, we struggle to really get like that audience in front of us to say like, this is how you use like X tool. If that, and and that doesn't really answer the question, but I I think there's a lot, I think there's a lot of like barriers to kind of clear communication, you know, and and language is one of them. You know, we have, one out of three families aren't speaking um English, and you know, we've got three kind of top languages, which are, you know, Portuguese, Spanish, and Arabic. But that that's a that's a barrier for our teachers to kind of make that phone call, because they need that resource of a translator. So they do make use of tools like, you know, Google Translate and some other other tools out there to kind of have the written communication, but it's a barrier to have that like quick like, hey, you know, your son or daughter has missed like two homework assignments, and have that quick phone call.
Yeah. Right.
You know, so there's 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 other barriers at work that, you know, we're trying to overcome, and we're trying to add more translating resources, we're trying to hire more bilingual, you know, faculty and staff. But there's it, there's there's challenges beyond just simply picking up the phone and calling and having a conversation, you know, because again, one of the three of the families, you know, we're gonna have, you know, there's gonna be a communication barrier there.
It it's just a time to do it, right, so it, you know, it kind of ties back to our goals and.
Well, that's that's, that's that's another issue, yeah.
Right, and making sure that um the class size is a reason most of the teachers can do that successfully, so they have the time to be able to reach out to all the parents and have those those conversations, so, um, you know, they all, all these things have budget impacts, um.
Correct.
But it's, I think it's worth having a conversation.
Yeah, no, no, and I think it's, and it's a it's a great goal, but I think it's probably more appropriate at the teacher level, and I think, like, I'm I'm really trying to model and push communication, but I think if we push that as a goal for teachers, I think that might be a more effective way of kind of getting that across.
Are you thinking more of lines of like email or like phone call or, you know, parents come in and stuff, cause I know that's, thinking about it from a teacher, I'm I'm assuming that they're like, oh, it's another goal that they want us to do.
Well, and and that's why.
When we don't have the time, as it is now, to do stuff like that.
Right, and that's why I was thinking, from a district perspective, can we put them in a position to be able to do that successfully, right?
Right, right.
And in terms of how they engage the parent, it's really gonna be up to them, right, um whether it's email, phone, whatever they're comfortable with, whatever parents or families are comfortable with. I just think it's important to have more dialogue about an individual student, I think that will will benefit them.
Yeah, and then we have like, and there's a numbers issue too, like when you're at the elementary level, you're talking about eighteen to twenty-five students, or at the secondary level, you're talking somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twenty-five.
Right.
If you're a specialist at the secondary level, you're talking three to four hundred kids and families, so there's there's kind of, those issues that we've gotta kind of work through for people too, and, you know, looking at what what is an expectation of say, a physical education teacher versus like a self-contained elementary classroom teacher.
Right.
You know, cause there are differences in terms of, you know, um service, like the service, certain size of service group.
And there could be some low-hanging fruit there, I mean, just getting grades of the parents in a timely manner would go a long way, right, so I don't think that's an unreasonable request, um, it would make a difference.
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, this doesn't, the the, one of the family portals too, they just, the second a grade is done, it's posted on there, it's not, I I I gotta admit, I just got onto it the other day, so maybe I'm wrong, but. I I seen this, I was like, this is pretty cool that all these grades and everything are on there, were you telling me it's not like instant, um, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
No, there's, and there's, with any technology too, there's issues, and I can even share a personal story, my seventh grader had uh come home with a s- a C on his uh progress report for, I'm not gonna say what subject it mattered. But he was insistent that two of the grades that were posted, that he got zeros for, they hadn't actually done yet, and it kind of, it kind of worked out that way.
Yeah.
So there's some trickiness to that too, that happens on both sides of it, in terms of like, there's a lag time between when an assignment is, you know, turned in to when it's assessed, to, you know, things that are posted up there. You know, if if there's something posted and suddenly like everybody gets zero out of ten points and somebody's grade drops, there's a level of panic that ensues depending on the class, so there's a lot of like. There's a lot of kind of moving parts of a lot of these things, and we've seen some success with different different platforms, but there's also issues with the platforms too. Um, but you know, you can always improve communication, I'm a firm believer in that. I think, you know, we're really. I think we're really trying to, again, like I said, model it, I think there's there's more we can do. I think part of the issue is kind of, you know, to what to what Joe Calery was saying, was that, you know, we do like look at like how many things we're throwing, teachers, principals, and educators. And, you know, some of it is we've really gotta kind of think, i- i- and the hard part too is like what's important at one level is not important at another level. And I'm not just talking about communication, but like there's different things going on in terms of like from a curriculum perspective, like science just had all new standards, so there's been a lot of. There's been a lot of work with the science teachers on just kind of getting the next generation of science um standards kind of incorporated into the curriculum. And I'm not making excuses, but I'm just saying like there's, there's, we always have more to do than we have time to do it, but communication is I think at the top of us.
Yeah. And I'm fine making it a teacher goal, I think that makes a lot of sense, as long as you put the teacher in a position to be successful, so, um, you know, we're not just gonna dump it on them, but we're gonna give them the support they need to be able to actually follow through with it.
So right now, the portal that that I utilize to and see my children's grades, that doesn't necessarily tie into the, to the report card process then? Those are two separate entities?
So, no, it does, it does, because those grades that appear on the, like, like for middle school and high school more particularly, cause the elementary level, they don't really.
Right.
Use the portal in fifth grade?
Hmm hmm. Uh, maybe the fifth grade.
I think it really kicks into Stacy and the high school.
Fifth grade though, I think they do.
But. Cause they were in the past.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, so it does tie in, it does tie in.
Alright, so they're.
So it g- it gives you a sense of kind of where they.
They're two separate programs, but they do in a sense come together, I guess. Joe, you kind of spoke differently on that, that's why, so I was just trying to.
Yeah, so so if you if you, so let's say for example, um, you take a, an online quiz or a test for the Google Classroom.
Right.
Um, you're gonna see that immediate grade on the Google Classroom, but that doesn't feed into the portal now, so the teacher has to input that into the portal.
Portal itself.
Right, right, okay.
So it's a separate step for the teacher, and i- and if you just look at like, the progress reports went out a couple of weeks ago, right?
Right. Right, exactly.
If I go on the portal, there's still some classes don't even have a grade on there, even if I got a progress report with with a grade, right? So it's hard.
Right, yes. Right. With you with the middle school side of it, yes.
Right.
Yeah, we're working with the program right now at the high school, Schoology, that will be able to do that, that will be able, hopefully. Um, we're still working with the two companies, cause the two have to, they have to be able to take in information and give each other information, right? Um, but it's. I guess Google Classroom um plus. So you can do all the same things with Google Classroom, but you can make all your um. You can give your assessments and correct all your assessments in Schoology, and then it'll transfer over, the teacher wouldn't have to do any of that.
See, and tha- that would would really help the teacher, right?
Right, yeah, but Google doesn't do that. So that's the difference, um, one of the differences. If anybody's taken an online um college course, like through Black, you you know, colleges use Blackboard or Canvas or something like that. This is just like that, so all of our students uh will have this experience. Right now it's at the high school, but we're hoping to push it down into middle school, so. But we're still working with the two companies to make sure that they read each other. Um, so.
Okay.
Alright, but for that reason, so teachers don't have to correct it here and then go over here and enter something else out, we just want it to read um and do it automatically.
And we're always looking for ways to simplify that process, but anytime you bring a new platform in, there's a, there's a tr- there's a training cycle, there's a, there's a lag, there's a learning gap.
Yeah, exactly, right. Yeah.
Um, the other thing we don't wanna do too is have it completely turn to like those online assessments that are multiple choice.
Yeah.
We really wanna keep pushing teachers to have like, you know, authentic assessments, writing, give giving feedback on writing. And when you give an assignment, like as an English teacher, and you have to assess a hundred to a hundred and twenty, like three to five page essays, there's like a, there's a period of time that that takes to get done, but it's important work. And we wanna make sure that continues to happen, because, you know, like getting the immediate response is, I think, what we're all looking for in today's society. But but we also want like people to improve their writing, we want, you know, the work that like Amy Cunningham in the English Department is doing around, um, you know, writing with colors and giving, you know, detailed actionable feedback to kids. It's critically important, but it's also very time consuming.
Right.
Hmm.
So there's there's that, there's that piece of it too. It's, you know, it's an important part of, um, you know, the educational experience, because there's a lot more than. You know, multiple choice questions or, you know, some of the fill in the blank stuff, they can easily assess them like, uh, you know, pick the platform that some of the teachers are using. Chris, Craig?
I just, I'm really supportive given of having the strategic plan and the strategic areas of focus across the district, how everyone's goals are aligned with those, so I love the fact that this is now aligned with that, it's very clearly easy to see that tie. I guess I would be supportive of the plan as you presented, if we could just remove items that truly will not be available as evidence. So if the MCAS scores are not gonna be available for us when we're assessing your performance in the spring, I just would recommend that we take those out, cause I don't think we should have something in here. If it's not something we're truly gonna use as part of the evaluation tool when we're looking at performance, certainly needs to be in the strategic plan, because it's absolutely something we need to be focused on as a district. But I think if it's not something we're gonna get in, you know, when we're doing your review, that we wouldn't include it here. Otherwise, I'm supportive as what kind of.
Yeah, and I can make that adjustment, I just think it's. You know, it's it's tough to leave it out, because it's something we've we've talked so much time about, but again, it it just doesn't follow the evaluation cycle practically.
Right, exactly. So speaking of that, I just had maybe one commoner question around that. So I was surprised as a new member to the committee that one of our first tasks was evaluating your performance. Is there an appetite to do that sooner, so that before people are potentially rolling off, we've gone through some of that process? I just felt like you've had someone who sat here for three years and now you have a brand new person who's, I don't know, do other districts do it differently, or is there a?
It's.
Have you already talked about this a lot of times, I don't know?
I think I think the best intentions are to kind of get it done in a timely fashion. I think that, you know, that ti- like when, cause technically you're you're probably trying to do it in like, you know, probably June, May or June. But we're also kind of, you know, wrapping up the school year, wrapping up the budget.
Well, you miss it even if it's June though, really, right? Cause election's in April, so unless you do it really early, you don't count.
Yeah, and then you're really not, like now, like right now we're proving the goals, it's November.
Absolutely, I know, I think it's late.
You know, so. So it's it's just tr- it's tricky, because, you know, it's not, like our engagement is, you, yeah, we we meet frequently at subcommittees and other things, but as a full committee, our engagement is twice a month. And so anytime like you say, hey, let's set this deadline, and if you don't meet the deadline, then it kind of pushes it back another month.
Yeah.
Um, I think it's it's just tricky, you know, and I think it's. I think the feedback from the committee is is good and is valuable. The timeline to some degree is almost less important. Like it's important, but like if it gets pushed back a little bit, I'd rather see a good product than like hit a hit a deadline in May.
Sure.
In in the, in school.
When again, maybe that's where I come back to the evidence. If the evidence isn't gonna be available, I don't think we help someone that's not familiar with the process by saying you're gonna provide this, if we're not, right?
Yeah. Yeah. Right, right.
The more we can, more specific we can be with what we're gonna be reviewing, it helps whoever's doing it.
I guess this is, I have a suggestion, I don't know if it's legal, can you do it, can you do it on the calendar year?
None of this is legal.
Versus versus school year, so if you went from January to December, then you'd have your MCAS information, but I, I don't know.
The only trick with that is it's over two different school years, and like, a- again, I don't think there's a perfect timeline.
Right.
And I don't, and I honestly don't know if other districts follow a different timeline.
I'm just curious.
Um, you know, with with the teachers, we have very specific like deadlines and process. We're a little more flexible with principals. You know, and I think central office and superintendents I think is is not as like, um, like regulated from like, cause we have that. We were able to see it the other day, like a thirty or forty bit document that kind of goes through the uh teacher evaluation.
Does our assessment have to tie in with your contract and as far as the timing of your contract? Do we know on that?
Uh, I don't.
Does any of the, the the more senior members of the group here?
There's no le- legal requirement.
Yeah.
There's no legal.
Um, but it, the best practice is to tie it into the the contract, um.
Right.
Part that we've had in prior years is that we've delayed the evaluation until like September, October, and now we're, and then we're determining if a salary increase after that, it's retroactive to July first, so.
Okay.
It just gets a little muddy, um.
Right.
Right.
You know, i- i- and every district struggles with that too. I think.
Okay.
This past year was somewhat unique, because that's the year that three new committee members come in, right? The years that there are two new committee members, it isn't as noticeable, um, but yeah, it, yeah, it's.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Fair.
Right.
Yeah, this was kind of a funky year from that perspective, because we had no incumbents coming back and and it was the year of three.
Right.
Right.
Right. Yep.
Correct, yeah, it was, yeah, it was certainly difficult from someone that was only on the committee for a few months to try to, you know, make a a.
Right.
You know, a a an assessment based off of, you know, a sh- a short duration of time of working with it, so.
Correct. Correct.
Yeah, there there are some, some communities, and I think we might have talked about this early on, there are some communities that will, will not require the new members to evaluate.
Okay.
Um, so that's something to consider, but I think when we talked through, we just felt that, I mean, you all have kids in the district, you're tied in pretty tightly to what's happening in the district. So you'd still have an opportunity to add some valuable feedback, um, so to suppress that wouldn't really make much sense.
Yeah, I don't think there's a, like, I don't think there's a perfect way to do it, I really don't. And I think districts struggle with it on a lot of different levels, and I think, you know, Joe's right on the money in terms of. It's just, it's just a t- it's it's not an, it's a, it's a weird supervisory kind of relationship too.
Sure.
It's different than like a traditional like employee, employer kind of point of thing, cause it's a, it's an elected board.
Sure.
An appointed, you know, an appointed person. So it's just a diff- it's just a, just a unique dynamic. We do it on television.
Yeah. So without going too far off on the tangent, is that something as a committee that we need to discuss a little bit further as a group to try to?
That could be goal, that could be goals, that could be goals.
Right, exactly, we have our goals, true, very true. Um, again, we're, you know, we're here to to go over your goals, so again, I don't wanna go too far off track, but.
Yeah, yeah.
Do we as a committee feel that we should look at that timing a little bit better and try to have a l- a little bit more of a discussion of, of the timeline of of when goal, when we. When to present goals, when to assess the goals, and when to go into, you know, the the next contract negotiation. So that way it all kind of flows together. In a little bit more flow, a little bit more on a timely manner, so we at least, any new nu- new members that are coming in can also be able to see the timeline. Again, without going down a tangent, should we discuss it in new business?
Yeah, I mean, that that's something we could, we could. We could put it up as an agenda in the future, if you want to put it out in the future agenda, just to kind of talk about just the process.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
Yeah, whatever we follow, talk about the policy for him.
Yeah. Okay.
You know, keep that as a note, we can bring it up, absolutely. I don't think anything is.
Sure. Yeah.
Not something, I don't think, we will talk about anything and everything that we need to, and if that's something that pops up, we can better the process where if the newcomers or or what have you, I'm all for it.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
Absolutely.
Sounds good. Who else?
Alright, next on the agenda is.
So do you get to vote them in if you're gonna?
Yes, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to accept um superintendent's goals for FY eighteen and nineteen? Motion by Jim, seconded by Megan.
I'll second with the exclusion of items that will not be provided as evidence, sorry.
Motion.
You can throw that.
We can, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay.
Sec, for, motion by Jim, seconded by Megan, all in favor?
Thank you, Megan.
No, sorry, thanks.
Uh, next on the agenda is reported assistant superintendent for business and human resources.
Um, I have for the committees this, uh, vote this evening, three warrants. The first warrant is in the amount of thirty-eight thousand two hundred seventy-five dollars and forty-four cents.
I get a motion to, to, motion by Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor?
The second warrant is in the amount of two thousand eight hundred sixty-six dollars and forty-seven cents.
Motion by Laura, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
The last warrant is in the amount of one hundred two thousand four hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Megan, all in favor?
The committee also has a list of course reimbursement for professional development, uh, in the amount of nine thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars and two cents.
Motion by Megan, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
And the committee also has a list of the latest appointments and hires from our previous meeting. And there are gifts.
And I've got two gifts, I'll read them off and then we'll vote them in together. Um, one is from Harold and Marcia Rhodes for Marcia Anzon- Anzalone for the art department, for a thousand dollars. Um, and the next one, um, again from Harold and Marcia Rhodes for Joseph Struzella, um, for a thousand dollars. Joseph Struzella.
Struzella.
Struz- what's that, is he a teacher?
Yeah, social studies teacher.
Social studies teacher, thank.
Yeah, eighth grade social studies.
Thank you both to Harold and Marcia, can I get a motion to accept these gifts? Motioned by Jim, seconded by Joe, all in favor? Uh, next on the agenda is future agenda items, anybody have anything they wanna throw in for the next meeting?
So just as we discussed, yeah, certainly the timeline of um goals, assessments, um, and contracts, so just officially put that on on future agenda.
Yep.
And I've got that.
Yep, yep. Yeah.
And I don't think it necessarily has to be on the, the next meeting, uh, per se, although how how far out are we on the next one?
I'd have to look at what we have agenda wise, but we probably, we could probably definitely get it December.
So, but we feel like. Yeah, we feel like, you know, we can get it.
I'm not sure how full that one, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Joey, I think, Kevin, this is obviously on your radar, but when would the revision of the strategic plan be coming back, just?
So. I'm thinking like either one of the meetings in December or January, just depending on.
Okay, great. Okay, thanks.
You know, there's some, there's some things we do just by, like a, like annually, we just wanna make sure it fits in where we have a a good amount of time in a meeting.
Stickable, yeah. Thanks.
Joe?
Yeah, so just curious if you heard anything back from the union regarding the class size discussion?
Yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna actually put that on an agenda as well, a future agenda item, just have a discussion, um, because contractually now we're, we're gonna redo that.
Right.
So, um, I'm thinking either, again, one of, either, it's probably gonna be a December meeting. And I don't, I don't see that as a lengthy discussion, but you never know.
Okay. Um, and then there's another requirement too, as part of the contract this year, is um. Is the student records and information or something?
That's, that's the same, yeah, so that's a meeting we're having. That I'm, that we have a, we have a group that comes in and we're we're talking about that, and we had the first one, I wanna say last week or the week before.
Okay.
Yes, motion. Next on the agenda is all business. And with that, can I get a motion, there's no executive session tonight, is there?
Right, right.
Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Jim, seconded by Chris, all in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, have a good night.